Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember DiBala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Here.
Great, good evening, everyone. Our agenda for tonight is not going to change. Looking forward at upcoming council meetings, a reminder that this Friday, February 23rd, we're having a community coffee with Ward 2 and Ward 6 residents, but anyone can come if they'd like. It will be from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. at La Chiquita at 9:40 East West Highway. Parking is in the back of La Chiquita, and there's plenty of it if you need to take a car, but you can always walk or take the bus there. Then on Wednesday, February 28th, we have a City Council Roundtable with staff regarding our council priorities. It'll be a little different of a meeting than we're used to having on Wednesday evening. It'll still start at 7:30 p.m., but it will be held in the Azalea Room here in the Community Center, not in here, and members of the public are welcome to attend. We will be discussing our draft council priority document with the senior leadership team, identifying priorities for FY 2019, and having each council member select areas they are going to take responsibility for over the next year. So I hope people can come out for that on Wednesday, February 28th. And then on Monday, March 5th, we have our Green Team Meeting. This is a joint meeting of the Committee on the Environment and the City Council. That will be at 7:30 p.m., again, in the Azalea Room. Then on Wednesday, March 7th, we're back here for our regular City Council meeting at 7:30. Our voting session that evening includes a single reading ordinance awarding a renewable energy supplier contract for the switch to 100% renewable campaign, a resolution adopting the council priorities, single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a stormwater study, a resolution regarding school facilities. Our work session that evening on Wednesday, March 7th, will be an introduction to our Neighborhood Services Team, the Police Department Annual Report, and FY 2018 Budget Amendment Number 3. Then the following week, on Wednesday, March 14th, we will be here at 7:30. We will have an update that night from our Youth Council. Our voting session will include the first reading ordinance approving FY 2018 Budget Amendment Number 3, a resolution authorizing the closing of Ann Street for the Crossroads Farmers Market. And we have tentatively scheduled two work sessions. One is on the Tacoma Junction Traffic Studies. Again, I want to emphasize this is tentatively scheduled because we're not sure yet, due to weather and other issues, whether it will be done in time. And the other thing that we have tentatively scheduled is rental housing inspections and the contract with Montgomery County. Again, we're just checking on scheduling with the folks from Montgomery County. And then on Wednesday, March 21st, we're here at 7:30 p.m. We have a voting session, the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2018 Budget Amendment Number 3, and our work session is a discussion of the Draft Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan and possible implementation steps. Then on Wednesday, March 28th, we have a work session, a presentation on options for developing a socially responsive investment policy, and I'm sure we will have more to come on the evening of March 28th. That is all for our agenda items in the upcoming weeks. Also this evening, we have a proclamation for Rare Disease Day, which is February 28th. I will read the proclamation to everyone. It says, "Whereas rare diseases are defined as those affecting fewer than 200,000 Americans, and whereas there are nearly 7,000 diseases and conditions considered rare in the U.S. according to the National Institutes of Health, and whereas while each of these diseases may affect small numbers of people, rare diseases as a group affect almost 30 million Americans, and whereas thousands of residents of Maryland are among those affected by rare disease, and whereas many rare diseases are serious and debilitating conditions that have a significant impact on the lives of those affected, and whereas millions of Americans have rare diseases for which there is no approved treatment, and whereas individuals and families affected by rare diseases often experience problems such as delay in diagnosis, difficulty finding a medical expert, and lack of access to treatments or ancillary services, and whereas while the public is familiar with some rare diseases such as Lou Gehrig's disease and sympathetic to those affected, individuals and families affected by rare diseases often must spend time learning about the disease on their own, educating medical providers about the disease, and helping fund research efforts. And whereas the National Organization for Rare Disorders is organizing a nationwide observance of Rare Disease Day on February 28th, 2018, and whereas many patients and caregivers, medical professionals, researchers, companies developing products to treat people with rare diseases, and others in the state of Maryland, including in Tacoma Park, will participate in the observance." Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents, hereby proclaim February 28th, 2018, as Rare Disease Day in the City of Tacoma Park.
All right.
Thank you. Next, we will have public comments on voting items. Our first voting item is the Second Reading Ordinance Amending Tacoma Park Code Title 8 of the Business Section, which is outdoor cafes. Do I have anyone who has comments on that ordinance? Okay, next item is a consent agenda. If there's two items in our consent agenda, a resolution authorizing submission of the FY 2019 Community Development Block Grant projects, and a resolution regarding state legislation HB 988 to the 2020 Census Grant Program. Any comments on our consent agenda? All right, seeing none, then we will move to general public comments. Anyone who has a public comment to make this evening? We're getting you the mic, Mr. Lovelace, and others who are able to can come up to the podium.
All right.
But you can go first, Mr. Lovelace.
Okay. Oh, it's not working. Okay, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I want to tell you people out there that, I don't know if you people know about it, but there's a bad problem with your sidewalk out in front of the footbridge. As you come into the council meeting on this level, on the sidewalk out there, the concrete, there's a big place where it's uneven on the walkway itself, and that's a real, I don't mean just a little crack, I mean it's a real meat beater. You can't even go over it in a wheelchair going forward. If somebody doesn't see it coming, you actually ram it. And that's not good for the wheelchair, that's not good for me, it's not good for anybody. So I was wondering if you people could get out there as soon as possible and fix that thing, because every week I hit that thing, because the people don't see it coming. And I'm telling you, it's not a small potato. It's a real meat beater, it's about that high. And also, I want to ask you people if you're aware of the situation in Florida where the shooting was, and now the children are taking it into their own hands, and not waiting for the adults to tell them what to do. They walked out of class and they're protesting gun violence and demanding sensible gun control. And I'd love to see that. They're going to be doing other events as time goes on, and also at the end of March, they get a big march coming up on Washington. And I'd like to see people participate in that as much as possible and help me get down to those events, because gun control is a very, very important thing on the peace agendas, as far as I'm concerned. You can't have peace while you're having war in the hood. The war is no longer just overseas, the war is in the hood. People get shot every day in D.C. People getting shot in schools. This is more dangerous than Iraq. So really, I want people to think about that. The war has come home to the hood, and it's time we make peace too. And the kids are starting to lead the way, and I'm really proud of them kids. I want you to see what you can do to ask the schools to have some of the kids come over here and give us what their feeling on gun control is, because I'd really like to know what the schools have to say. Thank you very much. Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Any other public comments this evening?
[inaudible]
Okay, seeing no other public, oh, sorry.
First, Buddy Daniels, 908 Prospect Street, Silver Spring. First of all, I absolutely agree with Mr. Lovelace, and I plan to participate in the March 24th protest against, for sensible gun control and against gun violence. But what I would like to say tonight, I would like to thank Mr. Troy at Public Works and all the Public Works personnel who worked so hard Saturday night before the big event at the Civic Center in search of my father with Bill Hawkins. Because of the unpredicted snowstorm late afternoon Saturday, there was at least two to three inches of snow on the sidewalks at the Civic Center. It just happened like that from 5:00 to 6:00, making it somewhat slippery. The Public Works employees worked as fast as they could to clear the sidewalk entrances and parking lots, making a bad situation much safer. I was working the front desk, and getting a bit hyper, I'll admit, and Mr. Troy and the Public Works employees were so, so helpful and worked so hard in this effort to make those sidewalks safer and the parking lots safer for people coming in to the building to watch the play that night. They did a phenomenal job, and I went up and spoke with them later on after I was off work. So thank you very much, and thank you again to the Public Works Department. They did a really incredible job in very extreme or interesting circumstances, shall we say, that we didn't expect. Thank you so much. I've got to go back to work.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Get back to work, yeah. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, we'll move on then to council comments. Do we have any comments from the council? No?
Just one.
Okay. Councilwoman Kostic beat you to it. All right.
Thank you. I just have one brief comment. Today, I attended the Council of Governments Transportation Planning Board meeting, and as part of our discussion and meeting today, we approved the inclusion of the New Hampshire Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Program in the air quality analysis for the long-range transportation plan. So that's some good news, and hopefully we'll do some part to offset the inclusion of the toll roads in it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman DiBala.
Yes, just briefly. For parents of adults with special needs, so tomorrow night, the police chief is meeting with PNA, with parents of adults with special needs, but it's open to everybody who's got a loved one who they would like to talk about this issue with the Police Department, about how the police interact with adults with special needs. And I'm pretty excited that Police Chief DiBala's agreed to do this. It's going to be at the Presbyterian Church.
Terrific. Councilmember Smith?
I want to thank those members of the council that attended the MML Chapter Meeting last week. The chapter gave the county executive a plaque for his service in Montgomery County, first as a county council member at large for a number of years, and then later as the county executive. So this will be his last term as county executive, and we appreciate his service. I also would like to thank residents who participated on a field trip that I sponsored with CPDC and Victory Housing on Saturday to the National Museum of African Art. I think it was a great time. We had a docent that took members of the community around to see some of the exhibits at the museum. So thank you.
Councilwoman Circe?
I just want to, one, thank Councilmember Smith for facilitating the meeting with the county executive. I think it was a really helpful experience for me as a new member, a new council member to kind of hear some of his perspectives on things going forward, so that was great. Also want to thank District 20 delegates for hosting a wonderful event in Annapolis. It was a great opportunity for us to not only interact more with those delegates, but also meet a number of other folks and just talk policy, which is always something fun to do. I also want to thank Ashley, just as a quick shout out to Ashley in the Housing and Community Services Group. We had a resident in one of the apartment buildings, a special needs resident, that needed some extra support, and she worked so hard to coordinate services and follow-up with property manager, and it really just showed, it was a really good example of how a resident, whether you're in a rental property or you own your own home, that there's, can be synergy between management in an apartment complex and city staff. And so I was really, really thankful to see that. And lastly, I want to just put in another plug for the coffee on Friday at La Chiquita. I think it'll be a great opportunity for folks to learn about the Ethan Allen Gateway Project, but it will also be a wonderful opportunity for the business itself. I had a chance to go out and talk to the ladies that will be serving us on Friday, and they were so excited to have us come. So these types of events and showing up not only shows that you support us and want to learn more and engage with us, but it also means that you are supporting a number of the small local businesses around the city. So I definitely want to encourage you all, it starts at 8:00. Put the kids on the bus, on your way to work, stop by, have an awesome cup of coffee, and learn about the Ethan Allen Gateway Project.
Great. Thank you. And just to piggyback on what Councilwoman Circe said about the event in Annapolis, also want to thank my colleagues who were able to attend that, and to let everyone know that we were able to present our gift to Delegate Hickson that evening. She has been working as our delegate for over four decades and is retiring, and so as we showed you back in December when we had the joint meeting with our delegation, but she was unable to attend, we had a really nice, I don't know what you call this, it was a plaque, a glass plaque, that we were able to present to her on Monday night. In addition, just to also speak to what Mr. Lovelace raised regarding our students and on the gun issue, I just want to say that Montgomery County Public School students, particularly high school students, did an excellent job today, and kudos to all of those students who respectfully, peacefully walked out of their classrooms, made it down to the mall to get together with other students, and to really raise their voices on gun safety issues. And then many of them went back to class after that, and I just want to say kudos to also the principals and others. We are very lucky in this area to have principals who are supportive, but also keep as a priority the safety of our students. So I just want to say thank you very much. And I will now turn it over to our city manager.
Love it.
Thanks very much. Wanted to give a few updates. The first is that the long-awaited electrical connection to the new signal boxes at Tacoma Junction has been completed by Pepco. The remaining work includes installation of a communication cable from the firehouse to the signal box to allow override of the signal during emergency response. And we're hopeful that by mid-March, Montgomery County would be able to take over all of the signals that have been worked on. It goes along Philadelphia Avenue from Tacoma to Carroll Avenue, and on Carroll Avenue from Tulip to Ethan Allen Avenue. I believe it's 15 different signals, which include the crossings for pedestrian crossings, should all be connected then. And I want to particularly note that a staff person in Montgomery County Department of Transportation has been really helpful in moving this along, so I appreciate that. Wanted to note that work will begin next week on a project to address standing water at the traffic circle at Kennewick and Kirkland Avenues. I made Talisha happy while we're there. The work will include installation of additional underground drainage and connection of the bio-retention in the traffic circle to the next closest stormwater inlet, and the project should take about three weeks. So I know that was one that the councilwoman had mentioned before. This Saturday, there's a special seminar for landscape and tree professionals here in the Community Center in the Azalea Room, Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:30. It covers tree protection during construction and the requirements for tree protection under the City of Tacoma Park law. And I'm particularly appreciative that our Public Works Department is trying to do these educational sessions. So it's particularly designed for professionals in landscape design, architecture, and construction, but anyone is welcome. On Monday, as has been mentioned before, we're having our Housing Forum here, and one of the things that I want to let people know about is, it'll be at 7:00. It'll be here in this room. Council will be at the dais, as will our consultants, Mullen and Lonergan staff, and they will first present some of the background information in terms of demographic information, and then talk about some current conditions in Tacoma Park and overview their recommendations that they've put in the draft Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. At that point, the council members can ask questions, and then members of the audience can ask questions. But if you're not here, you can watch it on Facebook Live and send in questions from that, or you can go online and provide feedback, and we will take those questions as well. So we want to make sure that, besides the information that's already been submitted that are housing questions, and this other information that comes in that night, that we have a good sense of ideas that people have for the kinds of housing strategies we should be pursuing, as well as questions that people may raise. Did you say that the comments that people have already submitted will be summarized at the meeting, so everybody knows what other people have? I'm not sure how they'll be presented, but we want to make sure that nothing is left out. Right. Okay, great. Yeah. Could I ask some questions? Will members of the public be able to ask questions? Yes, yeah, absolutely. Here or through Facebook Live or sending in messages online. Patty Mellon of the Library, of the Computer Center in the Library is now Patty Mellon of Housing and Community Development, and she's taken over the licensing position, working full-time, and we're so excited. Everybody's really happy to have her on board. So if you see a familiar face in a different place, it's intentional. Wanted to give kudos to the leaders of the Tacoma Park Police Department for organizing the short dance video this afternoon, encouraging people to be active for better heart health. It's Heart Health Awareness Month. And we danced to "Love Train" as if we were on Soul Train. Some of us not as well. And we had several council members, we had a number of folks from the Police Department, I represented the Recreation Department, a guy who we found out later is actually teaches salsa, so if we'd known that, we could have been better. And I was there, and city TV staff recorded this. So we'll put this out as part of the challenges that are out there from various governmental agencies, and the mayor challenged Gaithersburg, called out Gaithersburg to come up with their own dance. So we will see, when this dance video comes out, hopefully my stuff will be kept to a minimum, but we will see. It was a lot of fun, actually, and it was energetic and warm, so we got that. And I just want to note that the deputy city manager is on vacation for the rest of the week. That's all.
Great, terrific. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, we'll move on now to our voting session. The first item is the Second Reading Ordinance Amending the Tacoma Park Code Title 8. This was, we had our first reading last week, there are no changes that were made at first reading. Just to let people know, once we pass this, the ordinance will go into effect 20 calendar days following its adoption. The administrative regulations will be available for public comment in the month of March. Would someone like to move this?
I'll move.
Councilwoman Circe?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman, Councilman Kovar, second. Any discussion or questions?
I had a brief comment. I think this is an important change, and I can support it strongly. I do think it's one where with the regulatory process, and I know that the city manager will have an important role in developing those, and the public will have an opportunity to comment on them. The one area that I think it's important to mention, and several people contacted me about this, residents, and it can sort of fall into the category of the three S's, which are sight, sound, and smell, and so I think in the regulatory structure that we set in motion here in this proposal, it gives the staff, the city manager, the authority in particular to set hours of opening that could diverge from what a given establishment has. So I don't know what that should be or not be, but I urge you to look especially closely at that in some of these commercial areas that we've talked about in the past where they're about residential areas. So, thank you.
Terrific. Any other comments or questions? Now, seeing none, will the city clerk like to take the role on this?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, that passes just in time for the nice, warm weather. All right, next we have our consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Councilwoman Siemens, Councilwoman Kostic, second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, the consent agenda passes. Next, we have our work session. We have our quarterly financial report. We're looking at the first and second quarter.
Thanks very much. One of the items that we prepare internally every quarter is a financial report, just to see how things are going in terms of revenues received and expenditures spent. And in the past, we've presented them to council in differing ways. There was a period of time where we tried to do these big quarterly reports with summaries of activities from the different departments. They were burdensome and tended to get boring and not be very helpful. But what is really important, I think, and we've learned other ways, I think, to share the information from the other departments, but the quarterly financial reports, I think, are important, and so we are going to be very deliberate about having them come before you on a regular basis and to have them posted in a special place on the Finance Department's website page. And they're the same format every time, but the first few pages tell if there's something that's a little different, or some explanation about things that are out of the ordinary. So we have both the first quarter and the second quarter of the fiscal year, so starting in July 1, 2017, going through December 31, 2017. I would like you to become over time familiar with how these look, so that you also go back and can check on them and see how things are going. Things will change a little bit as we do budget amendments, because that changes what's in the budget, but we, some things you'll see are pretty standard over time. So far this year, at least so far through the first half of the year through December 31st, most inter-jurisdictional revenue, which is tax duplication payments, has been received. About half of the property tax monies have been received, and most income tax revenue has not been received. And this kind of comes by how things are processed at the various places where those funds first go, and it also depends on, income tax in particular is strange, because some people do quarterly payments, and some people have corrections, and other people have other ways that they file information, and so that tends to be very unpredictable, and we get income tax monies about nine of the 12 months in the year. So it's sometimes small and sometimes large, but there's, we watch how that flow goes, but most of the major income tax money comes at the end of the fiscal year, so it's always, you're always wondering how it's going to come out. The expenditure of funds for most construction projects don't usually take place until spring and summer, and so that's an area, when you look at expenditures, that there's usually not much spent. And in this group of quarterly reports, the most significant delay of And in this group of quarterly reports, the most significant delay of these is the library, and part of that is that we needed to do some more investigation and engineering work, so it's been pushed back about three months. So that is one area where we'll probably be including in the budget amendment that comes before you to identify that those funds will then, some more of those funds will need to be really allocated for FY nineteen as opposed to FY eighteen. The one area where there was kind of an unexpected difference had to do with parking revenue. We don't get a lot of money out of parking revenue, but we get parking revenue from meters and from fines, from people getting parking tickets. The, there were two things that happened in the first half of the fiscal year. One is that we had a staff vacancy in the neighborhood services team, because our part-time person moved to be the head of that unit and to the full-time position. So the halftime position was open, and that halftime position focused on evening parking tickets. And so the folks who are going to dinner at seven o'clock and not parking in the right places got away with a few probably during that period. That position's been filled, and I know that parking tickets have been given, because I've received some inquiries about that. But the other thing that has happened is that we've changed our parking meters, so that people can pay, pay online with their phones, or by credit card, or, as well as use the coins. And so we've actually found better compliance and fewer people than having expired parking meters, because people are, that don't carry around a bunch of quarters, are still able to pay for the parking. And so we will watch how this goes and for our predictions for FY nineteen, and to see how, what those adjustments are, are to be. And, you know, it's, I don't consider parking a real source of revenue. It's really to make sure that there's turnover of parking in a reasonable way, especially in our business areas, or that people are adhering to laws in our, in our residential areas. So it's not really a revenue source, but it is one of those that we, we do check to see what the differences might be. That was the most exciting thing about the fiscal statements and our financial reports. But as I said, we will be having the, a budget amendment coming to you, and I have asked the staff to, for those things that really, they're not anticipating happening during this fiscal year, that those be identified. And that would give us a good idea about what, how much that is, and then, you know, that can end up being used as going into the FY nineteen budget. So that's part of a discussion that you'd have at budget time. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Councilmember Kovar?
Oh. I do, but I do have two questions, so thank you.
Your light was first.
Thank you for the presentation. So you mentioned that a lot of the revenues come in later in the fiscal year, and I noticed that for most of the major categories, the percentage is in, although it went up from the first quarter to the second quarter, it's still, you know, well below half in many cases. Is that about average for what it would be? So you don't have any particular concern there?
I'm, I'm not concerned about these. This is, this is the kind of standard process that happens each year.
Okay. And then in terms of the, of the parking, which you also mentioned, I agree with you that the best result is just if people are able to pay and not get tickets.
Right.
But if, if that's consistently lower, and I don't think we do the enforcement in order to make money, although that may be a popular sentiment among residents, but is there the potential for enough of a drop that we'd have to look for some other way to make it up, or to avoid having a drop off?
To me, it's not that much money in the, in the general scheme of things, and yes, any, any drop in revenue means that you have to find...
What's the percentage of our budget roughly that comes from that? I'm sure it's in here.
Oh, it's, it's very small. I will have to get, I will have to identify that, but it's a very small amount.
It'd be good just to know that. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Suzy, for this information. Just a few questions. One regarding the library fines and fees. Of course, no one wants to pay.
Right.
But it looks like we're not really collecting that much. Is that, is something going on? Is that seasonal? Do you, do you see that revenue come in later in the...
It's pretty, it's pretty typical. It's not very much. And I think they've experimented with extending for those things that are not in demand, allowing somebody to just kind of, they just re, automatically up for another three weeks or whatever. The first time, I think that's a new process that they've done, because it doesn't seem, if, if that book is not on some waitlist, and a couple extra weeks that they would normally be able to do anyway, we just kind of give it to them.
Okay. On the passport services line, is the difference because of what's going on in this administration? That there are not as many people, you know, seeking passport services? Because it hasn't gone up very much.
You know, I actually think it's, it's, it goes up a little bit each year, but the thing is that the State Department only allows us to charge a very small fee for, for our part of it. So they actually have lowered our fee several times over the years. So again, not, it's not a lot, but it, they don't want us to get our part of it.
Okay. On the small trash pickup line, is that for residents that want bulk pickups? It's right under...
Yeah, I see it. I think that is what it is, that when you, when you need the, the bulk pickup.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that you're aware that what we discussed at the chapter meeting regarding cable franchise fees, they probably are going to decrease because the number of people that are cutting the cord, so...
That's right. So that'll be something that we will be addressing in the FY nineteen budget.
Right.
We'll see how it's going, and then, yeah, I mean, it is true. Those, all those revenues are going down. Fortunately, we were able to get that change, so that more goes to operating budget, which is where we need it, so we'll keep that going.
But it is a concern, because at the meet and confirm meeting with the county council, a representative from Ike's office is going to talk about it.
Okay, good.
On the bond premium, the 2017, is that the transportation? What, was the transport?
Yeah, it's the, it's just been cut off. It's, it's for the Flower Avenue and Ethan Allen Projects, yeah.
Sale of city property? What property did we...
You know, sometimes there's just like little things, like if, if a piece of equipment we no longer need, then we just put it on Craigslist or whatever.
Okay. And then finally, on the back of the page, and this goes for both quarters, why don't the revenues and the expenditures match? When you look at the special revenue fund?
Special revenue, the special revenue fund includes the cable monies, and we often can't spend all the cable monies. And anything, and often special revenue funds are things like the money that comes in for, for major grants, and so it may be a capital project that doesn't happen right away.
Okay.
So they don't have to, they don't have to match, they just have to be documented how that's going to, you know, that they're for a very specific project.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one thing I think would make this report easier for me to, to appreciate is to have another column in there, which shows kind of what last year's actuals were for the same time period, especially because some of these things, as you said, you know, well, this is kind of typical, but it's hard for my feeble mind to remember what was typical a year ago.
That's, that's a good point. We'll see how we can do that, but also it'll be useful when they're all in one place, too, so it's, it's easy for us to compile in different ways. But I appreciate that. I'll, I'll see if we can do that.
And I was just curious on the speed camera fund. I know that we have kind of puffed ourselves up that, that we have slowed people down with the speed cameras, but that means revenues are, should be down also. And how, how does this, it looks low to me. How's this look compared to last year at this time?
Okay.
And also, if it is low, what's the, again, the need for increased revenues other places?
Those are, those are good questions. I will, I'll have kind of a report done on that one, because there's ups and downs with the speed camera fund, like when the Carol Avenue Bridge was out, one of those didn't count, and then we've had some times when one of the machines is broken, makes a difference. It seems to, in my view, has stabilized pretty well in recent, in the last year or so. But I, I think it's worthy of a special report, so we'll go back and look at that and document it.
All right, thank you.
Actually, it's usually part of the police department's annual report, but I'll make sure that we get that out to you separately.
Thank you.
I'll just do a plug for the Residence Police Academy that Councilwoman Kostic and I are doing, because that's what we covered last night.
Ah, so maybe you have the answer and I don't?
No. But yes, but it is stable, and the fact that we've actually moved to having to pay the vendor a, a fee, and it's not a percentage of...
Right. We've changed the process.
The tickets, that process. It's, there's more stability in it, so we do know each year what we have to pay and the revenue.
But I'm more interested, did they let you test them? You know, like dry pad?
Oh, no, we didn't do that. We did, we have tested the tasers though. That was, that was the week before. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes. Thank you. This is really useful, and, and I agree with, with Councilmember Siemens, if we can work toward what does this look like compared to last year, I would really appreciate it, because I wasn't here last year. I have a question on the state income tax, and whether your sense is that we will get what we're projected to get this year. There's been a lot of discussion about whether state income tax revenue is going to change because of the new tax law. I'd just like your reaction on that.
Sure. Obviously, when, when the county expressed a lot of concern about their income tax revenue, I, I took a little bit of extra time to go through ours. We do not have the one percenters in Tacoma Park that make huge differences in the county budget for income tax. So our amounts don't look like they will be affected this, certainly this year. In reviewing the documents that came from the Controller's Office, that kind of overview of the possible impacts of the federal tax law, my sense from that is that for what would happen to Tacoma Park for the next couple of years, it's, may stay about the same.
Good.
The question is kind of, what do people's actions over time do? And so that's, that's a monitoring situation. Besides the fact that, you know, of course, I'm going to be interested, as you are, I know the COG, CIO Committee has been looking at that also very carefully, because it affects all of our jurisdictions, and we'd like to know what the patterns are, and if there are ways to either have policies that help ameliorate problems or whatever. So we've just started looking at that.
And, and one more question, just of clarification, in the revenues by source, under intergovernmental, there's a line for police protection for state, then there's several in lieu of police, in lieu of et cetera. Those are the county...
In lieu of, so the county tax duplication items.
And then the police rebate.
Right. That's a special county code item that increases a little bit every year, that functions like the police rebate, but it's a different category.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith, your light's still on. Do you have another question?
Yeah.
Terrific. Any other questions this evening? Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the, to the finance department for putting together the report.
Yep.
Next, we'll have our work session on the discussion of personal property tax.
Well, this is a fun one, and so tonight I wanted to talk about it a little bit at the, at a big picture level, and get your sense of things, so that I know what to bring back to you for action, if, if that's what you wish. Personal property tax is a very strange entity in the state of Maryland. It is a tax that is assessed on businesses based on the value of inventory, equipment, and furnishings. And the, the tax is administered by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. The state doesn't get any of this, or hardly any money from this, so they don't care about it. They don't enforce it, they don't audit it unless there's a particular complaint. And they are very casual about even checking for geography and that kind of thing. The forms themselves are confusing for businesses to complete, and so businesses often either don't fill them out, they may not know that there's to fill them out, or they put the wrong information in. They often don't know what to put for the geography question. And so we have found over the years that we have a real hodgepodge of businesses paying this tax, including the cities received tax from entities right outside the line, but have a mailing address that says Tacoma Park. They think, you know, so we've, and then we have a number of businesses in Tacoma Park that have never paid, or probably are not paying the right amounts. We have been trying to go through the spreadsheets. Every once in a while, we're able to get a spreadsheet from the state to go through the list and try to clean it up, to alert them to issues, and to get a sense about how much money this is and in which categories. The, and in fact, we've had lobbying efforts to try to get the state to fix this, and it doesn't seem to be working. So in Tacoma Park, we, businesses are required to pay personal property tax on one hundred percent of the assessed value of the business's inventory, equipment, and furnishings. And they have a nominal personal property tax charge for the equipment and furnishings to Montgomery County. Very few municipalities actually charge the inventory portion of this, at least at full one hundred percent level. And so one of the issues that has arisen, and there have been recommendations by city businesses, that we not charge the inventory tax, that that makes it, that makes Tacoma Park an unfavorable place to do business if there's inventory. One of the things that, of course, we worry about is lost revenue, and we, this is something that has a, is a larger amount. In tax year 2017, the city received personal property tax revenues in the amount of $411,000. Of this, the portion of that tax that was related to inventories, about $315,000. So it's not, it's not just a small amount, it is a good amount of money. And in the past, we have hesitated to forego those funds and try to find a way to, to come up with something else. One of the things that municipalities have the right to do in Maryland that counties don't, it may be almost the only thing that I know of that fits into that category, is to have real property taxes that can be done by, by different kinds of categories of property. So we could have a property on, a real property tax rate for commercial property that is different than that for residential property. And one of the areas that has been talked about before here has been an extra tax on vacant properties or other properties that may fall into some other kind of category. There've been a number of requests by the council to really seriously look at this issue and come up with perhaps a better system. And so we have outlined a couple of the more common options for this, and I'd like to go through those a little bit, and then hopefully get a sense from you in your, after your questions and whatever, about which way you'd like to go, so that then we can prepare the right information and get some more specific dollar amounts. So one of the things that we looked at is what would be the impact of simply removing the inventory portion? And again, we lose about, at this point, about $315,000. And so there were, if we would do that, you know, then we could make a determination about how we might make up those funds. We could waive a portion of the inventory tax. We could say that just a certain amount of the assessable value of inventory is taxed. And so a number of communities have that, some have like an eighty percent or a twenty percent. And so, a number of communities have that, some have like an 80% or 20%. The other option, and this was suggested by Councilmember Kovar, was to have a certain amount that was exempt, so that smaller businesses, or at least businesses with a smaller amount of inventory would perhaps not have to pay much of the inventory tax, would have very little that would, would be subject to the inventory tax, whereas some of the larger businesses with a lot of inventory would continue to pay quite a bit. So, I outlined in the cover sheet, kind of the impacts of exempting the first $25,000 in inventory value, or 50, or 75, or $100,000. If we were to exempt the first $25,000 in inventory value, that would, we would reduce city revenue by about $100,000, and 411 of the 570 businesses that are on the list would pay no inventory tax, that would otherwise pay inventory tax. If you take that all the way up to exempting the first $100,000 in inventory value, we would lose about $210,000, and then 506 of the five, of the 570 businesses would pay no inventory tax. So, those are options that you could consider, and again, make a determination if you simply want to forego the revenue, or have it made up in another way. One of the things that we looked at was what kind of, what would it take to raise, say, the property tax, real property tax on, tax on real property, on, for commercial property to offset this? And I passed out some sheets today, got late this afternoon, that you can take with you and consider and think. But one of the things that I found really fascinating is that it, in, in most cases, it doesn't hurt businesses much, many businesses are benefact, have, will receive a kind of a beneficial answer to offsetting personal property tax with commercial property tax increase. And so, you have to, as you look through, we've provided in the, in the larger spreadsheet, businesses that have property, that they're on, that they're the single activity on that property, because we didn't want to have and try to figure out when you've got a, a property that has multiple businesses on it, and how to figure that out. So, just for comparison purposes, staff chose, I guess it's like nine different businesses that are the sole occupants of a piece of property, so that we could, can, we could compare what would happen if we reduced, took off the inventory tax, but instead increased the commercial property, commercial property tax rate to either be equal to the constant yield, or that was, just came up, or the, keep the current tax rate. So, one of the things that's really clear is that if you have inventory, you're likely to save money. And that those entities that don't have inventory would often have increased amounts of real property tax, but not by much. The numbers are really quite small. And so, I've, I've just been spending a lot of time looking at this, and I want to spend some more time looking at it, but I think that it's one of these things that we always forget, that, you know, when you spread the costs over a large number, the actual impact in, to individual properties is relatively small. You know, there's, there's examples here, and, and the co-op is one that I, you know, that they did do a comparison about. For the co-op, for example, there, if you combine the property tax and the, and the personal property tax for the co-op, the total amount would be about $14,000 a year. And if you reduced, if you had no inventory tax, they would pay about $9,000 less a year. Even if you look at something like creative filing systems on Holton Lane, that has very little, if any, inventory, or cap, or the Dr. Kadimi Injury Center, the amount of increased taxes, you know, it's less than 200 bucks. I mean, it really is, it's really quite remarkable that it's, it's not a significant sum. And so, I think that it, it's one of those things for us to look at and think through, but it reinforces to me that the council then has kind of a big picture option about what would you, how would you like to proceed with inventory tax and personal property tax, and what would you like me to bring back, to, to present to you in something that then, you know, we can start to take action on. We do need to have, and we're trying to find the exact format that we need to convey the information, but our understanding is that we have to have the information conveyed to the state by May 1st. So, that's before you act on the budget. So, it is something that it's better to get it moving now. So, I'll open it up to questions, I kind of threw a bunch out to you, but if there are certain things that you like or don't like about any of these options, I'd like to know, so I can be prepared.
Can you just go over the, the smaller?
Yes, the smaller sheet is basically, this, this was the exercise about what would it take to raise commercial property tax rate to offset getting rid of the inventory tax portion of the personal property tax rate? And so, if you, if you used the, an option where you looked at constant yield numbers, you would need to, to, well, the way that this is done is if you needed to raise, say, either $325,000 or $450,000 to offset inventory amounts, what would the commercial rate need to be? And so, you would add whichever property tax rate you want to choose, and you would add to it, to get $325,000, you would need to add about an eight cents to that tax rate for commercial properties to get the same revenue that you would lose by getting rid of the inventory tax. If you were trying to get $450,000 in revenue, it's about 11 cents. And so, that's, so you would add that to the, you know, 50.75, or the 53.48 tax rate that we have.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Susie, for doing this. We've been talking this, about this issue for many years now. I guess we finally have some options.
We finally have some options. I will say, this is a complex subject in terms of getting the data is really a pain.
First thing, on the spreadsheet that you gave us, it has the total inventory and property taxes based on current, oh, that's the current yield rate, the constant yield rate and the current tax rate.
Right.
Okay, that's the difference.
Yeah.
All right. I would like to exempt 50,000 in inventory.
Mm-hmm.
In the inventory value. Have, we asked the businesses if we wiped out the inventory tax, what they would use that extra money for?
No, we haven't. Let, let me just say that most of the businesses don't have a clue about this, and so, they don't know how to fill out these forms, and so, they probably wouldn't know what amount that would mean to them. We would have to probably tell them what we think the amount is that they would save by exempting $50,000 worth of assessed value from them.
Do you see any value in that discussion? Because I don't want us to, you know, say, hey, we're going to give you all this money, and it doesn't translate into anything, the business that would potentially help the city.
The, there's, there's a couple areas that make it complicated. The first is that I don't, I don't completely trust all the numbers.
Okay. That's fair.
So, there's that. The second is that it would be likely that the business would be offset if there were a commercial property tax increase, that their rents would either go up, but that may not be until their next re-up of their rent, of their contract, of their lease. And so, it's, it may be very difficult to give an individual business accurate information about what they would save. What I have heard from businesses, other than the fact that they don't want to pay taxes, is that if they were across the line, they wouldn't have to pay them.
In Prince George's County?
Or in Montgomery County. All, all around us, they don't have inventory taxes. And so, so, so it's more the principle of it than maybe the dollar amount. It's worth probing that more. It was a recommendation by the, in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, to, to get rid of the inventory tax as a, as a way to attract businesses, or at least not dissuade businesses. But they didn't really talk about talking specifically to business. I'm happy to do that. I think we'd have to be really clear if we had good information to talk with them about.
And I just think we should be cautious if we go the route of the income tax, or the property tax increase on commercial property? Because most leases, if it's retail, property taxes are a pass-through. So, every year, you got to pay them.
That's right. That's, that's why we did prepare the, we wanted to see what that impact would be on the, on the actual business.
Right. And then the other thing is, even if it's office, after a year goes by, then the landlord settles up and sees if-
Right.
You know, it costs more for him to run this property than what he anticipated, and if that cost includes more property taxes, then he'll pass that on to the tenants.
That's right. That's what we would anticipate would happen.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure that if we're doing something that we think we're going to help the tenants and the business, you know, business owners.
Right. So, we would be, under, under these various things, we would be helping tenants with inventory.
Okay.
We would not be helping tenants without inventory.
Right.
So, that's, thanks for bringing all that up.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah. Put it, put another way, is it, is it possible to ask Old Town Business Association and Crossroads if, if we can have a, a meeting where we talk to people about this?
I think it sounds great.
I mean, I think that, I think- And, and have them bring out the, the crowd, so to speak, because, because I, I'm, I don't have a clue what-
Yeah.
Businesses are going to think of this. So, that's one idea. Having said that, I, I get that the inventory tax is problematic. I'm wondering about the, you know, the bureaucracy, the, the work involved both for the city and for the business owner, if we just stick with equipment and, and, equipment and furniture, and not inventory, if we, if, as, as opposed to moving away from that system completely? How much of a burden is that to, because that brings in less revenue, a lot less revenue, like a quarter of it?
Right.
But it's still a lot of this, may still be a lot of the same paperwork?
It's, it's different paperwork. I mean, it's the same form, but the part where you have to identify the inventory is really confusing. And so, they do fill out the forms, the, and those forms, you know, it gets assessed by, also by the county, so, so they will be paying that to someone.
So, the, so the county already has that furniture, still has, excuse me, that furniture and equipment-
That's right.
-tax.
Portion.
So, so there, so if, if someone says, well, I don't have to pay that over there, they're only talking about the inventory part?
I've lost you there. What I was, what I was saying is that, that businesses will need to fill out these forms because they're also used by the county.
Right. Okay. Anyway.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Circe?
So, thank you for doing this. And I, a couple quick points. One, I think it's a larger question of how do we, as a city, see our commercial space? And how do we want to grow? What our neighbors are doing will impact that. So, it's important, in my mind, you know, and I will be upfront in saying, I'm for getting rid of it. I just don't want us to, to experience this huge loss or detriment to the budget as a result of doing it in a way that puts us in a position where, you know, next fiscal year, we're, we're operating automatically at a deficit.
Right.
But I do think that it's important, and it kind of dovetails nicely with some of the points that will be discussed on Monday, about, you know, it's about retaining the businesses that we have, but it's also about recruiting new businesses to the area. I mean, for all of the talk that we're, we have about the junction, you know, if we ultimately see something built there, we need businesses to occupy the space. And so, if there are businesses who are of the mindset that it makes more sense for me to go two blocks into DC and save money as a result, they're less likely to, to, to establish themselves here. And I don't think that's what we, we want. I mean, I think we've talked a lot about how some of the smaller funding streams that we have just aren't going to be sufficient over time, and so, it, it makes sense for us to start thinking strategically about how we want to move forward in terms of development. So, one question that I do have, and I love that you put this together, I couldn't figure out how to do it.
Yeah, I give Serene's lots, lots of kudos today, she did a lot of good work.
Yeah. So, one of the thing, one of the questions that I do have is that, you know, in terms of the break-even point, which would put us at about, what is that, almost 0.5, what is it, 0.5, I guess it's about 0.6%, give or take, in terms of the rate? How would that compare with other jurisdictions in terms of, especially our neighbors? So, how would having a constant yield rate at about 0.6 put us in, in comparison to Prince George's, DC, and, and Montgomery County?
That's good information we need to get.
Because if it puts us on par with everyone else.
Well, I would just say, our, our rates are higher than anywhere around, I said, Montgomery County. But it would, it's really important for us to look at that. And I will say that the county can't tax commercial properties differently than residential, so we'll have to get you that, kind of that spreadsheet.
Yeah, that would be helpful. And I, one other question was, would there, you know, in terms of the deadline of May 1st, and I just want to make sure I understand the process, is the deadline for establishing whether or not we want to pursue the personal property tax in addition to whether or not we want to make any changes to the constant yield rate, or are those things kind of separate?
Those are different.
Okay.
Because we file our, we file our real property tax rate with the county, but this has to, the personal property tax and how we assess it comes from the state, and so we have to send them the information, and they have a kind of a different schedule.
Okay.
We're still trying to find out all the details about that, so I don't have that today.
Okay. And that, that would be helpful to know, because depending on the timing, it might matter.
Right.
You know, do you want to automatically kind of say, cut it when you don't quite know what we may be able to do in terms of the constant yield?
Yeah, and I will add that one of the things that's always confusing here is that the tax year is different than the fiscal year, and so, you know, there's going to be, it's going to be kind of staggered going through, so that's one of the things, it's probably not going to hit all at once, so it'll be, it'll, it'll act like being phased in, but I want to be able to, I want to understand, and I want you to understand what that timing is as it goes forward.
Yeah, that would be really helpful for me. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kostic?
Thank you, and thank you for putting this together. I want to echo Councilmember Circe's comments regarding my support for moving away from the inventory tax. And I think, I also think it's important to replace that with something, so I like the idea of looking at a real property tax for commercial properties. I just have a couple of questions, so that I'm understanding all of this. First of all, the numbers that you gave, the 315,000 from inventory, is that pretty typical of what we get, or is that, in terms of looking at, at offsetting that with the, the commercial?
It's been about that for the last few years. You know, we had a, we had some, some anomalies with the Prities, which was actually a large component of, of the amount, and we weren't getting money from them, so that hasn't been, that's not factored in here in the same way. The other thing is, and I referenced this a lo- The other thing is, and I referenced this a little bit in the cover, is that the spreadsheets that we get that show what's being assessed, that, those spreadsheets don't seem to be what actually gets paid. And I see on a monthly basis what the, what is sent from the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. And each month, they, they mention which businesses have gotten an assessment, and then how much has been abated. Because what, because people forget to pay or forget to file, and so there's a standard amount that is sent to them, and then when they get it, like, ah, where did this bill come from? I didn't, and then they file their paperwork, and it gets abated down to a smaller amount. So it's almost impossible to get an accurate month of, of what the, what the amounts are. When we, we look at these and we kind of compare, but from the spreadsheets that I've seen, the actual amounts on the spreadsheets, the actual amount that we get is about a third less than the amount that shows up on the spreadsheets. So I'm trying to think in those proportions, but it, it's going to be a little bit of a mystery until it gets worked out.
And so if we move to the real property tax, I assume that would be much more predictable?
Oh, that'll be very predictable, yeah.
Okay. Would the real property tax be, that would be based on zoning? Or how would we identify what is the commercial?
It's done by, it's done by use, how they identify themselves for, as, as, under the real property categories. And so there, there could be even some things that are more specific than that, too. So I mean, there could be, it doesn't just have to say "commercial," there may be other options. I know that there's some cities in Maryland, for example, that have a lower property tax rate for owner-occupied houses versus non-owner-occupied houses. So there's a variety of options that we could get into if we were being really trying to make a certain point.
And so you could theoretically do that with businesses as well, and have it be an owner operated?
Yeah, you could. Yep. I, I think you could, you could do a number of things, but again, it's kind of what, it goes back to what Councilmember Circe mentioned, that kind of what's our point? What, what's the message that we're trying to get out? And, and that would be good to know.
And then, we're talking a lot about the inventory portion, but we're still talking about possibly keeping the equipment and furnishings portion.
Right.
So right now, they are paying both us and Montgomery County the equipments and furnishings?
Yes.
That would, so that would still be a tax above, or that would be something beyond what they're paying, what they would pay in Silver Spring, for example, if we retain that portion?
That's true. There's a little bit, but it's actually quite small.
Okay.
But yes, you're right. For, for, if you're comparing us to an unincorporated place, yes, there would be a difference.
Okay. And then, one of my other questions was, it sounds like Estat is a little bit of a mess in terms of their, their records.
On this subject, yes.
Yeah. So would we still be, we would kind of forego that process? We would still, would we still be working through them for?
We would have to work through them, but the part that they're the messiest on is the inventory portion. There's still, we still would be looking carefully at the geography, you know, part of the, of the list.
Okay. And then finally, just in terms of the process, I would want to see us not have a gap in coverage of, of those funds, so that if we go forward with eliminating the personal property tax that we have in place soon after that, the replacement, real property.
Importantness. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Thank you for putting this all together. It's something that we've been talking about for a while, and I think it'll be important. I'd like to see us do something by the May 1st deadline, with the understanding that then it combines with the rest of our budget. Just a couple of questions and then some comments. So on option A versus option B, one of which is $325,000 in revenue, and one of which is $450,000, where do those numbers derive from? Is that, is that meant to just-
Well, the 325,000 is about what we get from inventory. The 450 could be maybe with adding the pretties back in and, and thinking about what increases might happen in general.
But 325 is a decent proxy for what it was last year.
For what it is, that's correct.
Okay. And so, are there any things that-
For the inventory.
For the inventory.
For the inventory portion, yeah.
Are there any types of products that are exempt from the inventory portion? I mean, I understand banks don't pay any of this, even on the equipment, but like food and all those things are still part of the inventory. Is that, is that right as far as?
They are. I think there's, you have to read the definitions of them.
But if you're a grocery store, or like the co-op, or whatever, you're still, all of what you have on, on hand is subject to this, right?
Right. And, and, I mean, yes. I mean, you have to like, there's certain things, if it's a quick turnover, it doesn't count the same, but there's ways that you average in a month. Like I said, it gets really complicated, and so-
But a restaurant that sort of rolls things through really quickly might not pay as much as a, someone who had a stock.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And so, and if people don't pay, and maybe the pretties were a special case, but if someone doesn't pay, we might find out through the state process, and is there a penalty? Or is it just they have to pay?
Oh, there's a penalty.
Over and above just what they are?
Yes, there's interest in penalties.
Similar to with other unpaid taxes.
That's right.
So, I mean, to me, you know, when I first was going around door to door, and before I was on the council, this was mentioned by a surprising number, not only of storefront businesses, say, in Old Town, but individuals who just ran businesses out of their homes. And so I, I understand some people aren't aware of it, but there were other people who were and felt it was unfair. And it wasn't so much that they were planning to, you know, get up and move to Silver Spring, but they thought it was an impediment to them being able to be successful. So I think, in particular, if you're a small business with a lot of inventory, like you're a, a small retail shop, and, you know, a huge percentage of your profit comes in kind of at the end of the year. And so if you want to do well, you've got to keep everything in stock, and then suddenly try to sell it all, you know, right before the end of the year. So I think it can be in some ways more unfair for, for small businesses, particularly, and particularly the inventory portion as opposed to the equipment piece, because people buy the equipment and they know they're going to have it for a while, and there's some, you know, depreciation with that as well. And so I think, you know, there's been a lot of talk lately, as the different businesses come and go, in Old Town, that for a lot of residents, the unusual and unique small businesses that we have are an important part of, of what makes Tacoma Park different and unique. And I think the same thing is true in the Crossroads, and Long Flower Avenue, and New Hampshire Avenue, and some of the other places. So I do favor doing something that in particular would help small businesses, and Councilmember Smith mentioned, I've talked about this as well. I like the idea of exempting a portion of the value of the inventory, and in the, in the memo that you provided, I mean, it looks like you could do that even at the lowest level, and I'm not, I'm not saying I would favor that, but even just exempting the first 25%, you already knock out like three quarters or whatever, whatever the amount is. So it seems like, you know, we could do that, and it's not a huge hit on the budget, depending on how far up you go. I differ with some of my colleagues, though, on wanting to do an immediate replacement, because it sort of strikes me as, this is us saying we value these small businesses, we're quote-unquote willing to say, pay $100,000 if we were to exempt the first 25,000 to make it a little bit more favorable for them to stay here. And then to me, if we did that, then we'd have to find that 100,000 when we did the budget. And that could either be by raising taxes or, or cutting programs somewhere else. So I, I don't see it as necessary to, especially by establishing a compensating increase in the commercial tax, because then I think, as others pointed out, within a year, or two years, or whatever the duration of the leases, that'll just get passed along anyway. So I would tend not to, not to want to do it that way. So I think some one of those four bullet points, that approach, I like. And I think for the larger businesses, you know, they would still get a reduction, too. It just wouldn't disappear for them. But I haven't heard from the larger companies or the operations or businesses in the city complaining about this. It's been mostly the small businesses, and so, so that's where I end up. You know, and then just one last question, and maybe what you said just a minute ago explains why this wouldn't be a good idea. But at one point, when we talked about this last year, there was a spreadsheet of like every business and every amount that there. Is that accurate enough to be of use to, to the council to look at?
We can share it with you, but like I said, the, the actual amounts are about three-fourths of-
Right. But, but at least in terms of showing us the rough ranking of our favorite places, or of the biggest places and the smallest places, we could sort of see that, right? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember- Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just be real brief. I do, I do support doing away with this, the inventory tax. But I really appreciate your talking about the, the fact that if we do spread that, then across all the businesses, it's a relatively minor amount. And I think it's a fair way to, to distribute and still keep our revenues where we need to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, much has been said, but I will, not by me, so I'll say it again. So I'm glad we're taking this up. This is something, as Councilmember Kovar said before, I think this was first raised when I became councilwoman in War III, by Laura Barclay, the head of OTBA, who I sat down with, and this was her top issue when I was running for election back then. The system is unfair, burdensome, and unpredictable. All the things that we don't like in government, quite frankly, that is embodied in this. It's unfair, it's burdensome, and unpredictable. And so in my mind, we need to move away from it. Keeping it and trying to fix it in some way for some businesses still leaves us with an unfair, unpredictable system. In particular, I think the pretty example is one that really is a good one to go back to. They're, they're a small business, but given what their business is and the amount of jewelry they have on consignment, honestly, they got socked with a huge bill. But they are still, I would consider them a small business. And so, again, I favor us moving forward to a system that is predictable, straightforward, simple, and fair, and I think that means getting rid of the inventory tax. And I'll agree with my colleagues who would like to explore a small increase that is, you know, spread across all of the commercial properties, a real tax on commercial properties, to look at that. And so by my count, and we could do a show of hands, but I think I consider myself, Councilmember Circe, Kostik, and Siemens, those are four people who voiced support for moving away from the inventory tax and exploring a commercial property tax. And Councilwoman DiBala. So I think that's five of us, and we're moving forward with that.
So what I'll do is get a little bit more specific information. I'm hoping to have the information a little bit on the timing that will be useful. I'm happy to still talk with those who are interested in, in some other options, just provide more information on that that you need to. But my anticipation is that in a few weeks, we'll figure out the agenda, when we could bring back the, the more detailed information. And, you know, one of the issues, one of the things about timing, and it may be useful here, is that, to answer Councilmember Kovar's, to address his point, in that we have to make the decision on if we're going to change the personal property tax before you make a decision on real property tax rates. So that could be a point where you decide not to do a commercial property tax rate. After all, it could be after the fact, if you found the money somewhere else to make up a difference. So I, you know, just to let you know, there is, there's kind of a little bit of fallback time for you to think about it a little bit more, too. And, and as I learn a little bit more about how the timing comes into play, that may be useful as well.
Okay. Yeah.
I agreed with, I meant to mention this with what Councilmember DiBala said, it would be helpful to get some feedback from the, the two business groups and others as well, just so we would have a sense for what they think.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. And as with anything, before we adopted, or got rid of this personal property tax, we would obviously have lots of meetings, other work sessions, and time for public comments, so.
Great. All right. And any other business this evening? We are adjourned before 9:00 PM.
Love it, love it, love it!
Thank you.